Good evening, everyone. Tonight is March 22, 2023 at 6:00 p.m., and I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So this is Janet. I move to approve consent agendas number three through five with some minor edits that were submitted on the city council meeting minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or edits? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, starting with Rob.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at the public open forum? Or is there anybody online who would like to speak at public open forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to number seven, planning commission report. There's no report because we had a joint meeting last week. So we're quickly moved on to number eight, the final plat for Bonfire Farmstead approval. It's pages one through four and in additions A1 through three.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we received an application from Bonfire Homestead for a final plat. There has been no changes since the preliminary plat, and so we as staff are recommending approval subject to title review, and their title review is in your additions and a developer agreement, which we will meet with the developer at our next city staff meeting, and we will go over the development agreement with the applicant. I don't know if the applicant has anything further to add, but I know that representative is in attendance this evening.
Good evening. Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
All right. And so I did read through the memorandum by Jacob Steen. So I guess I'll make the motion to approve the final plat for the Bonfire Farmstead, subject to title review conditions and the development agreement. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion from anyone?
I guess just for the record, your name for the record.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I have a question. Elizabeth, does a development agreement come back to us, just so we can see it?
Once we negotiate the development agreement, it comes back before the council, before final approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. On to number nine, engineer report. Kevin, I see you're online. Would you like to give your report?
Well, good evening, mayor and city council members. Kevin Bitner, city engineer. We're picking up on the conversation that we had last week with the recommendations in regards to the speed limit policy, and I did modify the map that I had provided at the workshop based on what I heard were recommendations coming out of that workshop meeting. I did not re-summarize the memo, the written recommendation. So I think what I'll do is I'll just kind of go through that, the recommendations on page two of that March 9 memo, and where we've talked about some changes and modifications, and we're, I think we still have some questions. So starting with Crossways, Lake Drive, we had recommended no modifications to those existing speed limits, and I believe that carried through Furman Street, and we're talking south 144th Avenue to the southern city limits. There was quite a bit of discussion on that segment, and I'm not quite sure where we landed. I know council member Hagland had recommended 30 miles per hour, and Sue had recommended the 40, I believe. So I'm not quite sure where we landed on that one, but we can come back to that. I think I'll just summarize where I feel we're at, and we can come back for discussion. Camp Three Road from Potomac to Lake Drive, I believe the 40 mile per hour recommendation carried through with the addition of adding a 30 mile an hour speed limit on the gravel segment west of Potomac. Going to Furman Street in the north end of town, this is from Broadway to 165th. We had initially recommended 40 mile an hour for that whole segment, but based on the discussion at the workshop, it was recommended 30 miles per hour for all gravel segments. And so we have, south of 169th is still gravel yet, and so the recommendation there changed to 30 mile per hour. Thernbeck Preserve, the new subdivisions, first, second, and third additions, 30 mile per hour for all those roadways. And then on 170th, basically from Thernbeck Preserve, second going west to Potomac, that's currently signed as a 35 mile an hour section, but that is gravel. And so based on what I heard at the workshop, all gravel would be 30 miles per hour. So that recommendation would change to 30 miles per hour. Notre Dame, we started out with essentially no change in the recommendation, keeping the school zone at 35 miles per hour. But the recommendation that I heard was to change the segment south of the school zone to 40 miles per hour, from its currently zone is 50, so it'd go from 50 to 40. And then again, the recommendation I heard for all gravel roads would be 30 miles per hour. I guess I don't know where we landed with signing all the gravel roads. I know Jim did some cost estimating on signing all the gravel roads. So I think that's where we're at right now. I think the only question that I have in my mind, unless you have other questions or changes, is what we're doing with Furman Street on that southern section, south of 144th Avenue. And so I'll open it up for any questions or discussions at this point.
So this is Janet. I mean, I'll comment on what I think is, should be the recommendation for the crossways to Furman Route. I've talked to a few people that live along there, and there definitely is concern about speed, especially if you risk walking along that roadway. The other thing is that what I heard, and I didn't talk to tons, I talked to a few, but what I heard was that it'd just be easier to keep the speed limit consistent for the whole stretch. In fact, I even had one person recommend, well, you just change all the city roads to 30 miles an hour, it'd just be easier to keep track of. So specifically for this one, because I know we're trying to kind of prioritize these changes for the purposes of signage, I would recommend that we just keep it 30 miles an hour from crossways coming off of Lake Drive all the way to the Lino Lake border. I'll also just note that the speed limit on the Lino Lake side is 45, not 40, so even by putting it at 40, you're not consistent with what people are going to be coming off of that stretch at. So the one question I have for Kevin that I didn't think about until just now is whether or not when we make these changes, we would make changes to any of the roads that are coming off of Furman, like Juilliard or 138th or any of those. I mean, those are usually short stretches, some have a cul-de-sac on the end. Juilliard is like horseshoe, but it's pretty curvy, and people do travel pretty fast on that. So I don't know if it's just easier to do kind of this in blocks, or if you want to go street by street, but if people are willing to consider just doing it kind of in blocks, I would include those streets in this update also, and also recommend 30 miles an hour.
Yeah, and we hadn't looked at anything else other than the recommendations we have brought forward at this time. So if you include anything additional, that's certainly, the council can certainly drive that decision.
Jim, what did you come up with for costs?
So the cost that I worked on was gravel. So we talked about changing all gravel roads to 30 miles an hour. That's obviously a fair amount of gravel roads in Columbus. So I went through, took a, what I'm calling an estimate of signage, and it's roughly $4,500 worth of signs and poles.
Can you repeat that?
$4,500 worth of signs and poles.
Okay.
And materials, you know what I mean? Any bolts and just different things like that, but 4,500. So my question back to you guys would be, and this is a policy question, what are you looking for? So you talk about, I mean, is it the intent to post roads that people are asking about, which is kind of how we got started, or to eventually post everything? And that would be the question. So because for me, then I gotta, I need to try to figure out budgeting, how many signs can I do a year? And, you know, if we did Crossways Furman, and it was your intent to do that, then, you know, you do that, you do that as a block, right? You're going to do Rondo Lake, you're going to do, you know, 138th, 139th, and, you know, Kendall and all the other roads around there. So that's the, that would be my question to you. What's the thought?
I think it's less confusing if you do it in blocks. So if people are coming down, you know, coming down Furman and turning off on 138th, they're not like, 30 miles an hour here, 45, 50, whatever, on this little stretch road is just, I think, more consistent, and you'll probably get better compliance if we aren't, you know, flipping back and forth every block or two with different speed limits. And I certainly, you know, if you come back with sign estimates that are, you know, way too high, this one that you just gave us, I was actually pleasantly surprised, it's less than I thought it was going to be, so that's good.
The more you buy, the cheaper it is.
Well, there you go.
So I mean, that's kind of the, that's kind of the thought process, so.
Yeah. So that would be my recommendation.
So I agree that in the beginning, we were only going to change the ones that were on the list and set kind of a standard policy for in the future when, you know, people came and said they wanted to change, what we would change it to. But I'm not opposed to changing all of them, or in blocks, and plan it out as, you know, in...
So for me, if we all agree, or if you guys all agree tonight, that the changes that Kevin's presented, plus gravel, that's a year's worth of work for me, and probably wipe out the budget. Because I, you know, I'm going to need to buy some extra signs that, I only looked at gravel only, because that's, that was a big deal, right? The other signs are pretty, you know, small at that point, there wasn't that many. So, you know, I would go through then, if you guys said you wanted all the side streets, I would figure out what all of those are going to be, where they all need to be.
Rough numbers on, this is Rob, rough numbers on that? Do you think about double the price, or?
No, there's not that, there's not that, I mean, there's 45 signs just to do gravel. Sure. So the amount of signs that we're going to add on to this is another 15. So I mean, not that much more. Sure. But I don't want to totally wipe my budget either, because I need to have some, you know, somebody's going to run a sign over, and, you know, I need to be able to replace that type of stuff, too. Street light, yeah. So I mean, my, I believe I did not raise the budget for this year, but I think my sign budget is 8,000. So I could do all of this and keep under that budget, I believe.
Yep, I agree. That's, that looks like a good way to go. I also was, when we were talking about the 30 mile an hour for all gravel roads, it makes sense, especially if they're, you know, side roads. I did take a drive down Lion Street, which is off of Hornsby. That's not posted what the speed limit is. It's probably one, I mean, there's hardly any houses there, and it's a straight stretch. Under best conditions, you could maybe go 50. I could not get above like 35 or 40 without going off the road.
Those roads are pretty rough right now.
Yeah.
They're generally not as, all of our gravel roads are generally way better than they are currently today. So if you guys drove around and you were, you know, there's ice patches, there's portions of them that are thawed and potholy, the lime rock is really rough. So I mean, that is not a good representation of what they normally look like. So in the summertime, I think it would be, you know, you say that you could probably, you wouldn't feel comfortable going 50. In the summertime, you might, because it's just, it's a lot smoother.
Okay.
So.
Jim, are you talking about doing all gravel roads, like Rutgers, that's about an eighth of a mile, or?
If we, if the, if it gets agreed on tonight that we change all of the gravel, I mean, I think to be consistent, I think you need to do them all.
So is that included in it, like down 181st when you go into Carlos Avery, another?
Yep. So that would include every gravel, I counted every gravel road. So Rutgers Street, Small Dead End, all of them off Potomac, 181st, up into, I call it, up by Wyoming, 191st, Coon Lake, everything.
So like Tulane and Vassar, you'd put one on each road there?
One on each side. Yep.
Okay. So that...
So what I did was, I put it at the entrance of every road. So if you, if it's a horseshoe like Vassar-Tulane, you drive in on Vassar, you see the sign, it's 30 all the way through. I didn't plan on putting anything in between, so at the beginning of every road. That's what I counted.
And I think we talked about this off the other day, but like Notre Dame off of Broadway, you'd stick one there, too, going northbound, because there's none there. So you got Notre Dame coming from the school district, hit the school, then you cross Broadway, there's nothing from there to 181st, you'd stick one there then?
It's not gravel.
No, it's not gravel, but it's...
It's not, it wasn't on our list of roads to do at this point, so.
So we would only post the roads that are on our list, these six or seven, plus all gravel roads?
Yep. That, I mean, that's what we've been talking about.
Yep.
So I mean, there are other roads that do not have speed limit signs on currently today either. So I mean, if it's the council's intent that every road gets posted, then that's a, let's take a guess, I'm going to say that's a three-year plan, right? So, you know, with timing and budgeting, you know, you're just going to, you're going to pick an area, and I'm going to figure out, I, basically what I do is I say, I want to spend $6,000. So I'll go out and I'll give my sign guy, this is how many signs I need, what is the price, and if it, if it's at my number or less, then that's the project. If it's more than that, then I have to try to break that up and figure out how far can I go.
Did you ever figure out the school sign? Is that solar or whatever it is?
It's solar.
It is?
Yeah.
So I was looking on the north end of the school district, you got to sign by Broadway there?
Mm-hmm.
You got a sign there also that says 35, and you just take off that when kids are present?
It would just say 35, and everything underneath would go away.
Okay.
Nice.
Is there a legal limit, maybe somebody knows what the height of those signs got to be? I know when you come around a corner of Broadway, it's like about three feet off the ground or four.
So the trouble is, is the 30 mile an hour sign, or the school crossing sign is at legal height, but then you got the 30 mile an hour sign, then you got when kids are present, and then you got all the other signs, and pretty soon you got 13 signs on one pole. So that inherently becomes problematic.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Well, I just, I think there's still a discrepancy on crossways.
So, yeah, so did we, did we agree that if we turn that all to 30, that we would also do the side roads, or not? I was, I mean, I heard you say that that made sense to you, but then I heard you say, whatever's on this list, so.
I agree to do whatever you tell me to do.
I like that answer.
So if you guys all agree that we're going to do all the side streets on there, I'll order more signs, and that's what we'll do. If you agree to do what we've talked about, then that's what I'll do. So you, I mean, I'm looking for your direction on what you want me to try to achieve in year one. So if year one is, let's just say that we've agreed on everything, you want to do the side streets off of Crossways Furman, makes sense to me, and you want to do all the gravel, that's this year's project. So that's what, that's what we would need the motion on, is what you want me to do today.
And would that also include the, like, Camp Three Road and 170th and the rest of those on this list? Okay. Kevin, I think so.
Thought I heard somebody say something.
I did, too.
Bill, how do you want that motion? You just wanted to...
Well, we don't, we're not ready for the motion yet.
Does that show his hand is up?
It is. It is standing up.
Kevin, go ahead.
Okay, so when we're talking about side streets, so we talked about side streets off of Furman. So then my question would be, what about side streets off of some of these other roads? For instance, on Notre Dame, we have 172nd, which is a residential road, it's probably a 30 mile per hour roadway. If we look at Camp Three Road, we have Williamette. I mean, are we talking all these side streets as well, or are we only talking the side streets off of Furman?
This is Janet. I mean, I would advocate that we do all of them consistently, and I guess, you know, I'm just trying to avoid confusion for people who are driving them, you know, that you're not having a speed change every block or every half mile.
It would be my hope that you would direct me that if I'm doing a road and there's a side street, that I take care of the side street at the same time, because I don't want to go back.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that gets to be confusing on my end, too. Did I do those? Didn't I do those? I got to drive over there.
And then I think, you know, as we plan this going forward, then we just block it off. Instead of talking about individual streets, you maybe can just show, you know, an area and say, here's our next priority.
Mm-hmm.
So this is Rob. Yeah, I would say that we do them all, but we do the priority ones that we've talked about for this year, as you're alluding to.
Correct. So this year for me would be what is on this list in yellow, gravel, and the one road that's not on here in yellow is Notre Dame. Yeah. And we've talked about Notre Dame, so as a hypothetical, that's part of this project as well.
And all side streets.
And the side streets, yeah. So, I mean, off of Notre Dame, there's 172nd, so that one would get done, and Crossways Furman, then, you know, 140, 144th, Juilliard, that, and, you know, the other, the other...
Williamette, yep, got it.
So.
So with that, I would, my recommendation is 30 mile per hour on 172nd and 30 mile an hour on Williamette. Williamette, well, part of Williamette is gravel, the north, the north portion of Williamette is paved, but it's a short cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that could be 30, too.
It'd be 30, yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and Kevin, this is Elizabeth Merzko. My question here is more procedural. So Kevin, you have a memo here, and that was the memo that you presented at the workshop. And then we had a map, and then we have a map coming back here. So we adopted, we adopted a speed study, or we accepted a speed study, and then the next procedural step would be then adopting a, an implementation policy? So then you would come back with the implementation policy where it was in phases, and phase one would be what we were discussing tonight? Is that how the statute works?
I think, I think at this point, the, it's subject to the speed limit policy, and so as you indicated, we didn't have an implementation policy as part of that, other than the recommendations that were in that particular policy that were, and that's what we're, that was the focus of this initial discussion, was the recommendations that were in the speed limit policy. Some of those recommendations have been modified by our discussions, both at the workshop and here tonight. So as far as what else proceeding forward, as far as an implementation plan after this, I guess is subject to further discussion, because we haven't talked about that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I've been listening carefully since I wasn't in the workshop for consensus, and if someone wants to make an attempt at describing what you think that consensus is, that can be incorporated in the motion. But I've heard a lot of discussion, but I'm not sure where it's all landed, so.
Trying to write something up to include it all, but there's just so many.
Yeah, I think we need one more final with everything that we've talked about after tonight, because I think there was still an open issue on crossways. Last time we talked about, because, I mean, it seems like it should be 40 on that road, but because the first part is 30, and that's not going to change, it really makes sense to make the whole thing 30, because then you have people going, speeding up, slowing down, and probably not even paying attention, doing what they want.
So if we want that to happen tonight, can we just address that tonight to move it forward? Because I think we're going to have a little bit of time, and I don't want to speak for you in the spring, there's not... I'm going to have some time. I mean, the ground is frozen, there's still... Is it? Yeah. I mean, there's, there may or may not be frost in the ground at this point, but I'm not doing science, now it's too wet, and there's just other things going on, and we got to locate. So you'd wait till summer? Yeah. Okay.
I've got a question. Did we ever really come to a conclusion on Notre Dame, on the 40 miles an hour?
I think so.
I thought it was on there.
Yep, it's on the map, or, well, I guess the map says...
Well, it's at 50 now.
Yep, but the...
But they recommended, Kevin, and Jim, didn't you recommend 45?
I think, I think our recommendation was leaving it until you get to the school, and then Sue, Sue had her comments, and then we talked about 40, which is why it's 40 on there now, out of the workshop.
I know you said you drove down it, and you, you know, whatever, but I look at that one like 181st. It's the same road, kind of, I mean, they're both straight, level, going down, either 40, and we left 181st at 45, and yet we're down to Notre Dame.
But they're not, they're, 100, that one's not in our, what we're going to change yet.
Oh, the top two were?
I don't think so.
Oh, we're just changing the bottom? Okay.
Yep.
But then again, like I said, they won't have, I don't know, maybe I'm looking in the future then, that both, to me, feeder roads.
So 181st, according to this map, is posted at 50 today, currently?
It does have 50.
Yep.
But you want to bring it down to 45.
I don't think it's, it's not in our group that we're considering right now.
Right, but I guess what I'm looking at is if, why we're bringing Notre Dame down 10 miles an hour, from 50 to 40, I just don't...
There was a range. I think our range was 35 to, either 30 to 45, or 30 to, 35 to 50. There was a range, and so we picked 40 in that range.
So fell asleep during that, but I don't know why. I think that road should be 45, but that's just my opinion. I don't know why I didn't say nothing at the time, maybe I, I just think it's a traveled road, and they're going, well, are we guessing to the point where they all go 45 anyway? So let's bring it down to 40.
You can pretty much bank on that.
Yeah, so maybe...
Well, I don't know. Well, I, I don't know.
I guess, Ron, if that's something you want to do in the future, we should look at that, too, to, for Hundred and Eighty First in the future. I'm saying, after we're done with this block, and then maybe focus on that northern portion.
Right, right, right. I, I think, I go along with Jim though, sometimes. These are roads for cars, not for walkers. They got walkways for, you know, and I, I think when we start slowing up the traffic, uh, I, I mean, I, I, I look at it, that, uh, they're gonna go forty-five. It's kinda like the, when Kevin was talking about, when I sat out on Howard Lake Drive, everybody was averaging forty, forty-three, and it's a thirty-five. So that's my pick on that one afternoon, but that's what's gonna end up happening. So, but I suppose we put it at forty-five, they'll go fifty, so.
Correct.
No-win situation.
Mayor and Counsel, perhaps a motion, just to kind of keep the movement tonight, would be to first, accept the speed study. Uh, second, request that the engineer come with an specific implementation plan. And the third piece of it would be your specific direction that you've reached consensus on tonight. And if that, if that, if that isn't the case, then I'm maybe one point ahead. But, uh, because there, as I understand, there's recommendations, um, there's some departures from those recommendations, is that correct? And then there's some specific priorities that you've listed?
I think, I think we've already accepted the speed study. We made a motion at a prior meeting to accept the speed study. And now this was sort of the second part of that, which was to set the policy, right? And, and I think you're right, that we should direct Kevin to, um, come back with an implementation plan. But I think, I think we're pretty close to being able to adopt this section.
Phase one.
Yeah, this phase one part. But if people don't feel that way, I mean, there's really nothing to lose by getting further clarity or spending more time thinking about it. There's no, there's, there's no fire at our feet that we have to take care of this tonight.
No, I, I agree that I think we're at, we, I agree with everything you said, and that this would be Phase One. And like Jim talked about, or, you know, if Kevin wants to come with an implementation plan on the blocks that we're talking about for the future on the rest of the streets, that, that makes sense. And adopt what we did, I think we agreed on everything except for crossways. That was the only one that we're trying, unless we decided, and I missed it, if it's thirty or forty.
I think what I was recommending tonight, whatever we agreed to before, was to keep it all at thirty. So that would be, I'll try to make a motion, how about that? And then you guys can tear it apart.
And, uh, Councilmember, when you make your motion, if you can refer to the, uh, engineer's recommendations, when you say, we've agreed on this, uh, just for public clarity, what it is you're referring to, what's your reference point?
Okay, so, um, I would move to direct the city engineer to come back with an implementation plan for the subsequent phases of this policy, and to accept the recommendations of the engineer, um, as outlined in his March ninth, two thousand twenty-three, um, memo with the following modifications, that Crossways Lake Drive, Furman Street, and all intersecting side roads would be signed at thirty miles an hour. That Camp Three Road, um, as noted, would be forty miles an hour, but the gravel portion would be thirty miles an hour. That Furman Street, oops, I better look at the right, the right, uh, version here.
Yeah, that is.
That Furman Street, um, northeast from Broadway to Hundred and Sixty-Fifth would be thirty miles an hour. That all gravel roads in the city would be signed as thirty miles an hour. And that, um, Notre Dame would be signed as noted, with the, uh, side roads of Hundred and Seventy Second signed at thirty miles an hour. And I'll go back to the Camp Three, the, the side roads of Williamette off of Camp Three would be signed at thirty miles an hour. Did I get everything?
Yep, except, uh, the Notre Dame would change from fifty to forty, uh, from Kettle River to, um, the school.
Broadway? Oh, yeah.
The school's on.
So I'd accept that amendment. This is Sue, I'll say.
Rob, I'll second.
Well, it's moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
I have, I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Um, as I heard the motion, I heard Furman Street from Broadway to Hundred and Sixty-Fifth at thirty miles per hour for the whole length.
Did I say that wrong? You have forty.
Yeah, it should, if, if, per my recommendation, um, per the map, it would be forty miles per hour from Broadway to Hundred and Sixty-Ninth, and then thirty miles per hour on the gravel segment, which is essentially from Hundred and Sixty-Ninth to Hundred and Sixty-Fifth.
Kevin, this is Rob. That forty mile an hour zone is the, the portions that are bituminous or asphalt?
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
So I would accept that amendment.
So Kevin, I just have, uh, just one more process question. Um, so the speed study, this is my understanding, the speed study sets the policy, and, and that was, um, what we did back in November. And then in the study, it says we were gonna do an implementation plan. The implementation plan was to set speed limits? Or was it to, um, uh, implement a plan on what road you were going to sign?
No, the, the, uh, the policy provides a procedure for the, for the council to decide what speed limits to set. We provided recommendations within the policy. Again, that's the ones that we're discussing here tonight. But basically, the implementation beyond that is, is, uh, open to, uh, council, either council recommendation or to be handled on a case-by-case basis. So in terms of implementation, further implementation phases, uh, what I'm hearing at this point is to, is to come back with a further implementation plan beyond this first phase.
And, and there, there lies my question with the attorney. So is this, is the memo an addendum to the speed study policy because we are going to sign all gravel roads? And initially, your speed study indicated the policy was only going to be the roads that you laid out in the policy? So is the memo an addendum to the study adding, adding that because now we're signing all gravel roads?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, the way I heard the engineer describe it is, this is the policy and implementation plan, and this is the first phase, which the council has accepted and modified. Um, and that, um, the later documents will be a further implementation plan. So the memo constitutes, as I understood it and heard it, the, uh, policy and the first phase of the implementation. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I have another question on the motion. Were we also gonna do Hundred and Seventy Second and also Williamette?
Yeah, I mentioned those. Nope, I mentioned those in my motion.
Oh, did you? Okay. All right, very good. I missed it.
That's the world's longest motion, so I can understand why.
Anything else, Kevin?
Nothing on my part, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
I'm just impressed that you captured it all, so.
Then I'll call, it's been moved and dis, uh, moved and seconded and discussed, I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
I have nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Number ten, attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor, um, I have one item this evening. I was asked a couple of weeks ago to look at the memorandum of understanding that was drafted in, uh, two thousand nine. A little bit of background on this for newer council members, uh, there were several projects that were kind of moving at once, and it involved, uh, a number of agencies, including the city. Without getting into the nitty-gritty, um, the Rice Creek Watershed District had a ditch project that they wanted to advance. Uh, Washington County had a project, uh, for construction of the County Road eighty-three overpass, uh, which I believe, uh, connects into Howard Lake Road. And the DNR, uh, had land that it was, uh, asked to provide to, uh, Washington County for the road project. Uh, they wanted to be made whole by acquiring the Stanky property, uh, that was acquired. The city was interested in a number of things, including, uh, getting wetland credits once the wetland restoration in that area occurred, and could be part of a wetland bank. Um, and so all these pieces came together very quickly. Uh, there was a facilitated meeting on September twenty-second, two thousand nine. Uh, Beth Bartz of SRF Consulting facilitated that meeting, and there's a lengthy set of minutes that go with the memorandum. Uh, the memorandum, uh, by its nature, is a memorandum of understanding, it's not a memorandum of agreement. So it's, it's considered a way to, uh, reflect all the parties' understandings coming out of that September meeting, um, at which certain actions were agreed to. It's not binding, it's not something that we would legally sue on. The question that I was asked to address is, how do we formalize our request as a city for those wetland credits that we were expecting, uh, when that restoration project was completed and, and those, uh, wetlands could be added to the bank? The, the good news is, well, first of all, the memorandum of understanding is very short, but the good news is it attaches the minutes of the lengthy meeting, and the minute taker and facilitator did a very good job of capturing everybody's sentiments. Um, there's at least two references in those minutes to the city's desire to obtain wetland credits through restoration done by Rice Creek Watershed District. Uh, Mayor Metler, uh, represented the city, I believe Elizabeth was there, and I was also there. Um, so Mel Metler stated the city's objective to obtain wetland credits through restoration done by Rice Creek Watershed District. And then later, the, um, Doug Thomas presented the goals from the Watershed District's standpoint. And one of those goals was to provide some pub, public benefit to the city of Forest Lake and the city of Columbus as they look at future municipal projects where they may need, may need to mitigate wetlands. So that's very clear, that not, not only was it our desire as a city, but it was a clear objective of the Rice Creek Watershed District. Um, in recent discussions, I don't know that memories have gotten, grown fuzzy, but time certainly has intervened. And so we were asked, as a city, to, okay, if you believe that was the understanding and obligation, then make a specific request. So my recommendation to Elizabeth, I didn't do up a big memo on this, because, uh, my, my memo in part would say that it's a non-binding agreement, uh, a non-binding statement of an understanding. Uh, but I think the, the, really, it's, it's incumbent upon us to, to ask for what we want, and to specifically ask for time in front of the board. Um, and what I mean by that is, I would write a letter on behalf of the city. I would recite this, uh, this understanding, and say that it's time now to make sure that our, our credits are noted and banked, and that it's important to us. Um, I asked Elizabeth, what's a reasonable request, and she said, two to three credits. Those credits can have pretty significant value, so I think you're all aware of that, given the amount of wetlands we have in our community. Um, so if the council agrees, I would simply draft a letter, recite this history, and because, um, we've been asked by staff to make a specific request, I would not only make that on behalf of the city for three wetland credits, uh, but I would also say, we would like time in front of the board to present this. So it doesn't get to be one of those things that, you know, goes to staff and they discuss it, and then we don't have the opportunity to be in front of the board, reminding them of all, all the good that came about because we cooperated, uh, back in two thousand nine.
So, Bill, a question through Jesse, uh, or through the mayor. Those, those wetland credits, and those would be then used in the event that a developer wanted to fill in wetland?
Mr. Mayor, uh, and Councilmember, most likely it would be used, uh, if we had a road project that, that impacted wetlands or a utility project. I suppose we could also, through some sort of economic development project, use them. I think they would have to be used for public projects. That, that's a good question.
For public?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our, our working assumption is that they would be for public projects, projects. Um, we did have, um, before the city, the city sold land to the Loves Project. There was a desire to create a buildable site there. Uh, but Loves was able to use the city's parcel as an entrance and to offset some of the stormwater issues. And so it was, there was no need to then use those credits for that project. So when we had city-owned land in that quadrant, there was a desire to use those credits potentially for that project. Uh, but most likely it would be in a road project or a utility project or something that we, uh, we need credits, uh, from the bank.
Cool, thanks.
So this is, um, this is Janet, so thank you very much for that summary. This has been something that's been weighing on my mind for a while. I'm glad that we're gonna move it forward and try to bring it to resolution. So I would, um, move to direct the, um, city attorney to, um, request time to address the Rice Creek Watershed Board and to draft a formal request for recognition of those wetland credits, three wetland credits.
Rob, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? Call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, number eleven, uh, Mayor and City Council Members Report. Rob?
Uh, just report, uh, I was at the Pancake Breakfast, it was a good event, good turnout, saw Janet there, a couple folks in the crowd as well, uh, that was good. Uh, something else is, maybe have to come back to me, but that's all I have for right now.
Um, yeah, I have one thing, uh, I'm gonna let Sue talk about the Personnel Committee report, but, um, coincidentally, we just got done talking about Rice Creek. Mayor Priner and myself were at a Rice Creek Watershed District Board meeting, um, this morning. Uh, we had asked to be included in a discussion that they were having regarding Anoka County Ditch twenty-two, ten, thirty-two, what, I can't remember the number.
Ten, twenty-two, thirty-two.
Ten, twenty-two, thirty-two. Gosh, you'd think that'd be burned into my head after all this time. The reason that this matters to us is that this ditch runs through Columbus and has been implicated in creating some flooding problems in the areas, uh, kind of southwest of, um, Lake Drive down to the Lano Lakes border, especially around Pine Street and Joe Drell Street. And it's a long story. It, it seems that the problem began with the construction of Joe Drell Street, and there's been a few kind of minor adjustments that Rice Creek and the city have taken to try to mitigate the problems. I remember when I first came on the council, there were significant numbers of complaints from that area about flooding. In the last few years, there hasn't been so many, but it's been unusually dry. And I think that the Watershed District has talked about this, and then it's dropped, and talked about this, and then it's dropped, and now they're talking about it again. The reason that it matters to us is, one, it, it has been a chronic flooding problem, and there hasn't seemed to be a remedy that has fixed that yet. Um, there is at least three different engineering reports that conflict with one another about what the remedy should be. There's concern about, if there is a remedy, who should pay for it? And they're looking to us to perhaps be part of that solution. And, and the development, some of the development that we are, you know, anticipating and seeing along Lake Drive, if that development comes to completion, it creates more impervious surface, potentially more runoff. And right now, that runoff is being directed into that ditch, and then would contribute further to the flooding problem, if, if it's not engineered correctly. So, um, we, we asked to be part of the discussion. The purpose of the meeting today was to have that board decide whether or not they were actually gonna take this up as a topic. And if so, when they were gonna have further discussion on it, and they are. The next meeting that they plan to have. The next meeting that they plan to have this discussed and hopefully come to a conclusion as to what engineering report is correct and what the remedy, if any, should be, is on April 26. And I'm hoping, Kevin, that you or somebody from your office can be there. And they are expecting us to come with a presentation of why we care, what we're willing to do, and kind of what we know about the project. And there's a lot of moving parts on this. I mean, Elizabeth knows well this situation, and so does Mayor Priner. And I think that we can quickly bring Kevin and/or his designee up to speed. But I think, I just wanted to bring that forward to everybody's attention, answer any questions there are, and then request that we're able to have the city engineer engage in this and help, I guess, direct Rice Creek or advise Rice Creek or advise us on what our options are or responsibilities are based on the engineering that the watershed districts signed off on. I mean, we don't get to make the calls on these kinds of things. So that's kind of my summary. Did I leave anything out?
No. Except that they wanted us to bring whatever information we have.
Yes.
And Janet said, everything has to be signed off by them. So whatever information they have, or whatever information there is, they should have. And they can start thumbing through their files.
Right. It's, you know, this has been, what, I don't know, how long has it been since Joe Drell Street got put in? 12, 15 years ago?
2004, in that era.
So like the MOU, there's a lot of time that's elapsed and a lot of people that have come and gone, and nothing has been very well, I want to say, hasn't been very well documented in terms of sort of a longitudinal trajectory of when things happened and who signed off on it and things like that. So I think it's going to require some reconstruction of history and then some assessment from an engineering standpoint about what makes the most sense. I don't know how you can have three different engineering reports that don't match, but they do.
So I remembered, I was going to report. This is Rob. Were you good?
I don't think I need, I don't need any motion on this. It's just, Kevin, is that, as far as you know, is that date going to work for you? The meeting's at nine in the morning, and it's in Shoreview.
That was my question. What was the date?
April 26.
And that's at Rice Creek?
It's at, they have their meetings at the Shoreview City Hall, so it's in Shoreview, not at their offices.
Yeah, I would get Tim Olson involved in this discussion.
And we'll set up a time so he can kind of go over everything with you and give you adequate time to kind of dig through everything, and Elizabeth adequate time to see if there's information that we have that maybe they don't have.
Yeah, that would be necessary for us to get us up to speed on all the issues from the city perspective.
Okay. Thank you. Now I'm done.
Yeah, no, perfect. This is Rob. I just, what I'd missed is, we had attended the League of Minnesota Cities, most of us on the council in the city here, March 9, where the league talked about key topics and things that are coming up that might affect cities all across Minnesota. So it was good to be brought up, us speed on that, and where their bills are at and the things they're pushing. Bill and Margaret Fessel set up appointments for us to meet with our House Rep, Nolan West, and Senator Mike Croon, where we got an ample amount of time to talk about issues that are facing us right now. It wasn't a ton of time, but I think it was enough time to get our point across and help them understand where we're standing. And I feel like they understood where we're at. And that was what I had to report on that. Anyone else had anything to add on that day?
That was well worthwhile.
Definitely.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have the Personnel Committee report today, and it's on a topic that was, we've been talking about for a long time, and it is the Code Compliance Inspector position. And this position was developed last year, and it started when we were talking about public nuisances, CUP conditions not being enforced, and other compliance concerns. But we discussed it at length when we did our residential home business moratorium and reviewing the ordinance and making changes. And at that time, several council members felt that it was important to have this position to enforce that ordinance. Otherwise, why do the ordinance? And so this position was posted, and it mainly is going to focus on, and this was in the job description, the city's code enforcement program will be carried out through complaint-based and proactive enforcement efforts with an emphasis on respect, customer service, and problem solving. This was approved in the budget in December. The job description was approved by the council in January at the January 25 meeting. It was posted shortly thereafter, and the posting was made on the League of Minnesota's city and Columbus websites, Indeed, LinkedIn, Minnesota Works, and Facebook. There were eight resumes submitted, five were scored and invited to interview. Of the five invited, one did not respond, three accepted other offers, and one was interviewed. But the one we interviewed was really good. So...
And boy, did we interview him.
Yeah. And there were several interviews. So the Personnel Committee is pleased to have identified Aaron Luicki as a great candidate for this position. He is currently a permitting inspection coordinator and safety director at Renewal by Anderson. He has a bachelor's degree in recreation and sport medicine and five years' experience in reviewing installation plans and performing onsite inspections. He's held many other positions, property, maintenance management, health and safety, sales, and was a foreman and journeyman ironworker for 15 years. And he has also been a youth hockey coach for almost 20 years, which toughens everybody up, I think, if you have to deal with young boys and parents of young boys. So besides his experience, the committee feels like his personality really fits with the expectations of what we've talked about. We really were looking for somebody who's outgoing, respectful, shows leadership, has good communication skills, and an importance of listening. And he really showed all of those skills during the interview. He had a lot of really good examples of, you know, going out to customer sites, resolving issues, planning big, complex projects, kind of, I mean, I wouldn't consider it a complex project, but it was complex in the way that it was balancing customer service, planning events, and all of that worked out good. So he has a positive attitude, he's respectful, and the committee feels that, you know, it would be great that he would manage this position well. So any questions before I make a motion? That went good. Okay, so I, the Personnel Committee recommends extending an offer of employment to Mr. Luicki for a full-time position of Code Compliance Inspector. Starting pay would be at step two, and starting date is being discussed.
Is there a second?
So this is Janet. I'll second it.
So it's moving seconded. Any other questions or discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Rob, nay.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you. I did have one other thing. Our planning technician update, so the council accepted Ella Geifer's resignation on March 15th at the Joint Planning Commission and Council Meeting. Her last day was on March 10th. The Personnel Committee reviewed and updated the job description. We made a couple of tweaks, took out a couple of things. One thing was related to what the Code Compliance Inspector will do. So we removed that, tweaked a couple other things, and it's in your packet if you'd like to take a look at it. And, but we want to do it as quickly as possible because she's, her last day was March 10th, and we're getting into the busy season for permits.
Do you need a motion to post that, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the motion is to accept the job description.
Okay.
Because we can post because it was just a replacement position.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to accept that job description.
This is Janet. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? Call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And that's all I have.
Ron, anything?
I have nothing.
Then, Public Works?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I got a couple of things tonight. I'll start off with something really simple. I got an update on the delivery date for our road grader that we ordered last April. We will possibly see it in September of this year. So a little bit longer than they thought, but I'm glad I ordered it when I did. So that's the update on that. The other thing that I'd like to discuss tonight is a topic that we covered at the workshop last week, the utility bill adjustment policy. Just a quick update on what that is. Our auditors said that we need to have a policy in place for utility billing that would allow us to make adjustments. The adjustments could be anything from, you know, we messed up on the bill, a meter didn't read quite right, or a resident has contested the bill that we sent them. So in all of those cases, we, that would allow us to make adjustments. If the adjustment was more than a certain amount, there would be a group of people that would come up with a reasonable resolution to it and present that to the council. The council would either agree or disagree, and then, you know, we could move forward with that. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts without getting into great detail, kind of like we did last week. So if anybody has any questions on that, I can ask those. Otherwise, I need a motion to approve that.
Any questions, anyone?
So this is Janet. I'll move to approve the utility bill adjustment policy 23-03 as presented.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you for that. I have one other kind of a question. I got an email from the park board talking about lighting in the park. Janet may or may not have more background on this, but I have a couple of questions because currently our park is closed from dusk till dawn. So I guess what my question to the city council is, the park board is, the park board is looking to light the park more than it is currently. Exactly what they're looking for, I don't really know. But I guess I'm kind of looking for a little bit of information from the city council before I dive into this and do a bunch of legwork. Is this something that, you know, we're kind of interested in, we're not really interested in? Because there would be a lot of moving parts. And really not sure, I mean, anything's possible, but there's not a lot of power in the park. So, I mean, it could be semi-costly. And like I said, I really don't want to do a bunch of legwork if there's not really a lot of people that are interested in kind of moving forward with that. And I'm assuming, I was going to ask Janet, I'm assuming they had some discussions at the park board about it, so...
Yeah, so I can maybe shed a little light on it. You know, they had brought this up actually a couple of years ago. It was on the, sort of on their preliminary budget, and then it got kind of sidelined. And since we are now in the midst of working on a park master plan, it's kind of come up again. So it's my impression that they're not looking at doing this in any real time. It's more getting information so they can decide whether they want to include it in the park master plan. And then, of course, that would also include, you know, what is the cost? And they would use that to project out, you know, when in the future they might recommend that being done. So I don't think it's a request because they want to try to recommend doing that in the next year or two. I think it's, and they may, just I think that they're doing it because that was part of what was brought up to consider including in the park master plan.
Okay. So with that, that's a lot more information than I kind of had. So my email was kind of like, how much is it going to cost to put lights in the park? So I think, I think what I'll do is I'll kind of, I'll talk to Lori a little bit, and I'll just kind of shoot an email in response to that. And, you know, have them come up with a plan. And if they have a plan on how many lights they want and where they want, and then, you know, then I can try to work through maybe some budgetary numbers or something saying that, you know, it's going to cost 20 grand or 5 grand or whatever it is.
I think, and I think, you know, Ron, you comment on this because you walk in the park a lot, and sometimes depending on the time of year, it's not light. So I'm assuming that part of the, part of the, you rule breaker, you're not supposed to be in the park after dark.
I might be there looking to see if anybody else is violating the law. I got to, do you have a question? That light up by the tennis court that's off on Kettle River, is that supposed to be a park light?
No. That is, that is a light that kind of covers the intersection of 165th and Kettle River. So I know which one you're talking about. That is not for the park.
The one farther down. If you're walking on the trail and you get by the bench and you walk, you know, the bench for the Lions? I forget the name of the guy. I apologize for that.
Kelgrub's Memorial Bench?
Yeah. If you walk up about 50 feet, there's one right off to your right on Kettle River.
It's on, it's on the power pole, and it's for Kettle River, not for the park.
Okay. All right. It's not at the intersection of 100.
No, but I mean, it lights up the intersection in some fashion. I mean, it casts a pretty broad light in the dark, but it is more, it is for the road, not the park.
One real quick question. Is that light in the parking lot on all night?
The lights in the parking lot are on all night.
Okay. I just wondered why, because why they'd have them on if you're not allowed in there? Why do you need light in the parking lot?
Keep the people that aren't supposed to be in there out of there. If it's dark, I think you're more apt to get people.
Well, when they correct daylight saving time, I'll be walking in the daylight, so...
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Connor? Anything from you? Public Communications Coordinator report.
I just wanted to provide an update this evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, on the Coon Creek Watershed appointment. There was a couple vacancies that came up, and you requested that we send out a mailer to Columbus citizens who live in that district. Unfortunately, we did not get any applicants, at least none that alerted the city that they had applied. So it seems we don't have any appointments to make. Other than that, I have no other further report.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I have two things under my report. The first is, my memo is in the additions on page eight, and it has to do with some, the proposal for some fraud mitigation services. We've had, we've been through our audit period, and there's some things that were brought to our attention. And one of the things that we've been working on is looking at security, looking at fraud and those types of things. In this case, it was brought to our attention that check fraud is rather prevalent in our society, and it's one of the highest percentage of fraud is in the check cashing area, and it's a pretty high percentage. I actually was a little surprised to know that... I actually was a little surprised to know that it's between sixty-eight and seventy-five percent of businesses get hit with check fraud. So, I, again, I was pretty surprised. I actually went online and looked at some of the studies from the financial professionals that do surveys every year to track this. So, we did a little research, and Wells Fargo does have a, have a program, and that program is called Positive Pay and Positive P E Pay. And what they do is, the city would upload all the checks that they write, and by computer process, if someone were to try to cash a check that was not in that batch, they would not cash it. So, they would flag it, and then they would send an email to the city, and then the city could say, yes, it was a valid check or not. And I think in this particular case, both programs, whether it's Positive Pay or Positive P E, P E service, I think it would be in our best interest in order to implement the program. I know that our deputy treasurer has had an instance in the county that she was previously at, and they, they did have check fraud, and they ended up having to pay because it was more than three days. So, there are laws in effect that protect you from check fraud, but when there's too many days in between, that's when it gets a little gray, and your insurance doesn't pay and all those sorts of things. So, looking at overall how it works and the cost, I think it's well worth the, the cost to implement the program. So, both myself and the deputy treasurer are recommending that we participate in, in both programs, which is Positive Pay and the Positive P E program. Looking at the cost, I did have Wells Fargo randomly pick a month and a batch as to what it would cost the city because it's, the cost is per batch. So, we have two batches of checks a month. It corresponds with council meetings when we issue checks. And in that particular case, it was just under twenty-two dollars, it was twenty-one sixty-eight. Now, if they perhaps, if there is a check that they find is fraudulent, there's an extra charge for it. So, it is, the cost is per check. So, it is dependent on how many checks you have. But in this case, it was twenty-one sixty-eight for the batch. So, I anticipate even if you said it was fifty dollars a month, you know, fifty times twelve a year, that would be the, the minimum, you know what I mean, the minimum charge. And if there were other charges, you know what I mean, it would be above that. Because generally, we probably do have about fifty checks a batch for each meeting. Looking, looking at the budget itself, we didn't budget for this particular service, but I think in looking at our reserves, we would well cover the cost. And then we can look at twenty-twenty-three implementing that into the budget in our bank charges line item. So, the, the recommendation from the, from myself and the deputy treasurer is that we do enroll in Positive Pay and Positive P E program starting in April, and then we would have that service moving forward. Questions on that service?
So, this is Janet, there's not a question, but we were talking about this, and it's funny because I just read an article in the paper about a process that they use to do, to commit this fraud called check washing. So, they steal the check, they use like nail polish remover to remove the P E in the amount, then they jack up the amount, and then they go to another state and they cash it. So, it's not like, oh, you know, we have a check made out for six hundred dollars, and they're stealing it and going to cash it. They're changing the amount in the P E and going across state lines in order to cash it. And, and you can imagine the amount's not going to be six hundred dollars, it's going to be a lot. So, it evidently is on the rise. I didn't think anybody wrote checks anymore, but evidently they do.
So, I'll make the motion to approve the city enrollment in the Positive Pay and Positive P E Fraud Protection Services with the Wells Fargo Bank for the city's checking account. Is there a second?
Yep, this is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? Call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
The second part of my report has to do with the Columbus program that we're doing tomorrow. And so, what I'm handing out is, I'm going to go over to the program because everyone participating will have duties and things that they were going to do. So, I wanted to go over the process with everyone. If anyone has questions, we can go over that. This is kind of more of a hands-on workshop on, on how tomorrow will work. So, you have four pieces of paper before you, and you have to kind of separate them in order to, that's why they're not stapled, so that you can work through them. So, so tomorrow, there's a program. The program will start at seven forty-five. Connor and Carissa will work the welcome table. They'll welcome all the guests in. At that time, you'll have about fifteen minutes of, of people kind of socializing, shaking hands, and doing those sorts of things. Depending on how many people we have attend, there'll be tables. And then each of the five council members, myself, Jim, Bill, Dean, are all, I'm sorry, and Karen Fleming, will be table captains. We're hoping we have that many people that, because I believe there's eight members to a table, so I did tell them to put twelve tables together because we'll also have a speaker table, and we will have all three banquet rooms, and they'll keep the, so it'll be one big room, but it'll be a long room. So, the way the program is working, or how it's, the agenda for, I should say, the agenda for the program, you have the seven forty-five registration, and then there's forty-five minutes for breakfast, table questions, and general discussion at the, at the, at the tables. Then there are guest presentations. Our mayor's going to make a presentation, Anoka County Economic Director is going to make a presentation, and Joe McPherson is going to make a presentation. And then afterwards, there'll be short presentations by the businesses themselves. So, the table captains, really, their jurisdiction is the first forty-five minutes. And what I did was I outlined the table captain's duties. So, we'll facilitate, you'll facilitate the first ten minutes where you're just going to kind of roam around and, and again, let people know that, you can just small talk, whatever you want to do there. And then there'll be breakfast. So, at eight o'clock, I will bring everyone together and say, time to sit down, find a table and a spot. And that's when the, after that, and that's all I'm going to do. I'm just going to welcome everybody, tell everybody to grab a seat. And then it will be the table captains that will take over because you're going to be kind of the lead person at the table itself. Oh, I forgot, I take it back. I'm going to kind of introduce, you know what I mean, again, just make sure everyone finds a seat. Running Aces wanted to have a few words at the beginning, just welcoming them to the hotel. So, they'll, they'll, they'll do that. So, the, the job duty of the ta, table captain is to maintain the group discussions until breakfast is announced. And sometimes they have it all out, sometimes they don't. It just, it just depends on how quick they have the breakfast set up. So, it would be up to the table captains, once they made that announcement, to make sure that everybody goes up, gets breakfast, knows how to, to get whatever they need to do, and then trade business cards because we encouraged everyone to bring business cards, and then to delete, to lead the discussion. So, the first page where it says table captain, this is, this is your table. So, you're, and, and I don't know if they're round tables or square tables, they didn't, they, they didn't tell me. I just ordered twelve tables. And the idea is you're going to have your group around you. And this sheet, this is, I asked Connor to give me a form for the website business directory, and this is the QR code for the business directory in order for them to sign up. So, if they want to be on the business directory on our Columbus website, this is how they would sign up. So, that's the, that's what this shirt, sheet represents.
So, Elizabeth, are we going to have, are they expected to do that at the event? Or are we going to send this home with each of them so they can do it when they want to?
So, Connor, I, I, I guess I've not, I've done a QR code, but not one of these. So, can they do this at the table, or can they, can they take this home? How lo, how long is this good for?
It, the QR code's good until the internet dies.
But what, I mean, what are, what is our expectation? Is this like we pass, there's eight of them at the table, so we pass this on to everybody? Is there going to be one, and they're all going to go, I want that? Or, I don't have time, I don't have the information, I need to go back to my office to do it? Can we get several of these so that if they want to do it when they get back, they can?
I think if they want to do it at the table, they can. If they want to take it back because some, maybe they don't know what, what information they want on the website. I think the idea is, we, actually, if you look at the business directory, I don't know if anyone has, but it's, it's a pretty nice page where they can list their business. You can click on it, it links right to their website, it's got the contact information. You know, we list it out, and we list it out what type of business it is. But the idea is you have to opt in. So, and that's the way it has to be. We can't just put businesses up there, they have to opt into the program. So, this is a way for them to opt, opt in to the program. So, Janet, we'll, we'll have, you know what I mean, copies, you know what I mean, copies, many copies for people who want to do that.
I think because a lot of people, and not me, because I don't do QR codes very well, but a lot of people do, and they just go, geek, and that's it.
Well, that gets you to the place where they can fill the information out.
And they can do that later. So, once they, they can capture the QR code, but they don't have to complete the whole thing.
But can, is the cap, is the QR code captured on their phone so then when they get back, they still have it? Or do they need this piece of paper to re-scan it?
I think so.
It's supposed to open up in your browser.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, I didn't hear either of you.
So, it typically saves it in the, in the window above, like a browser almost.
I mean, I've, I've done it, but I've always just done it like in the moment. I've not like tried to go back and find it later.
I have any other?
Pretty sweet.
So, a few extra copies would be nice for those of us who aren't up on QR codes.
I also included the, the link that's at the bottom there next to the Columbus logo.
And they could just take a picture of that, and they would know where their pictures are.
Yeah, that link takes you to the exact same page.
Okay. The other thing that might be nice, if they have never been to our directory, is if we just had a sample of what one looks like, like this is what it will look like. Like if you can just do a screenshot of an existing one or something, or mock one up, that will entice them to participate because it'll be so beautiful.
A screenshot of the website?
What the directory will look like on our website, so yeah, so then they know what they're, what they're signing up for.
Okay.
So, kind of a point, I guess, is there's a lot of owners of companies now that might not be as tech savvy. They hire people that are tech savvy, right, nowadays, to do that work for them. Is it possible to maybe have a paper copy that they can just fill out? That we, we as council members maybe could have, just to say, if you want to do it this way, here's a paper copy, just give it to me before you leave?
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to be complicated, but I think you might understand.
So, the, the part of the tale, the, the table captain discussion is, is not only talking about the QR code, but the, but the fact that we have an opportunity on our website to, to, to have the business, you know, to have the business on the website. So, I don't know how many businesses know that we have a spot on the website where they can actually go. And, and, and when you're on the website, you'd click on businesses, and the first one says business directory. And if you click on that, it brings you up to the page, and it's, it's by category as far as what type of, of business it is. And again, the, you know what I mean, I was just on it, just kind of checking again which ones are still in Columbus and, and those sorts of things. And again, it's a really, it's a nice page because it refamiliarizes yourself, like what, what business do we have in Columbus? In, in big picture. In, in looking at the business directory forum, historically, we have given out a business list. And we will give out a business list, just not tomorrow. Because we want to be able to update with information, and we've, we've gotten some information, it's just not all compiled in one place. But we will let everybody know that we will email out a business list. If we don't have their email information, that's how they got their invitations. So, we're hoping we have all of their email addresses. We will email everyone that we have a business list for an updated list once we have all the information.
And is that what you want us to communicate, or are you going to communicate that?
You would communicate that. So, if you want to be on the, you don't want to be on the website, you know what I mean, here it is. We also will give out a, a listing. But, you know, I think the problem with the listing, the listing is only good for today. You know what I mean, like tomorrow it might be outdated because something might change. And so, it is hard to keep up with all the changes and, and people changing, and phone numbers changing, and, you know, all those sorts of things. So, when we went to the list, we had a lot of updating to do, just because, like I said, things just change.
Could I ask a quick question? So, if somebody puts in their information, tomorrow it changes. Can they do that electronically? Can they update their own information in our listing, or do they have to make some request to update it?
Connor, I believe you have to do it, correct?
For the online director, yeah, you would just fill out a new sheet, this that we're talking about. For our internal lists, we would need to be informed by email, phone call, or a discussion at this event tomorrow.
The, okay, so, I'm going to step one step. The reason why I gave you this sheet, and this is probably more for me, I've a hard time remembering everybody's name. So, it always held to me if I, the idea is that you're writing the names, you know what I mean, in the, in the circles, you know what I mean, in the circles here. So, that's, that was the reason for the sheet. You don't have to use the sheet, it, just for me, it's easier for me to jot down the name. Not that people are not going to, they're going to have name tags, and we'll put them on. But again, for me, I'd have to wear my glasses in order to be able to see those name tags because they'll be little. And, and we are going to ask them to put first name on the tags, first name and business so that we know what businesses they're related to. Okay, so, the, you have the, the captain's direction sheet, which is the first sheet that I initially gave you, kind of letting you know what, what times and what we're doing, what we're doing at different times. And then you have the seating chart, you have the QR code, and then lastly, you have the discussion, the discussion questions. And this is where I thought we would have the most discussion tonight, to make sure that we all agree on the discussion questions. But before we do that, I'm just going to move on so I, you can get an overview of what's going to happen at eight forty-five. So, at eight forty-five, this is after your portion is done, the mayor will speak, Anoka County Economic Development Director will speak, maybe for about ten minutes. He's going to talk about all Anoka County's programs for businesses and, and opportunities that they have for them. And then lastly, Joe McPherson is going to talk about all the transportation projects going on in and around the area for, for Columbus over the next few years. From nine thirty to ten, this is when the businesses will have their forum, where they're going to share what type of business they are, how long they've been in Columbus, and basically what they want to tell everyone else. And this is, in the past, has been really, you know, soup to nuts. You know what I mean, what they, what they kind of want to tell us? And so, it could be that they need to hiring, you know, hiring employees, great sale going on, they're giving away free pizza, I mean, it, it could be anything. It's kind of their opportunity to tell everyone something about their business. So, and it, there's no pressure. I've always said to people too, if you don't want to do this, just say pass and pass the microphone because I've asked for a, a, a independent mic so that everyone can pass it around so that's not, no one, someone's going around. So, they just pass the micro, microphone around from each table to table. This does take a while, especially if you have a fair amount of businesses. And then if anybody has, you know what I mean, questions. So, the, the talking points for the table captains, we had questions initially that we talked about at the EDA, that if you were going to go around to businesses, you were going to have questions, and you were going to do more of a one-on-one, you know, talking with them. I took some of those questions, I added some questions. This was really, at this point, this is really what, we can tweak them here now. I mean, we can, we can change this, and I can, I can change this real quickly, but. we can change this and I can, I can change this real quickly. But, so the, the first one was, you know, Columbus as an overall location to do business. And, and this is really for you. You can, you can phrase that question any way you want, you know what I mean. But here I was, I was trying to get is, do you like, do you like your location in Columbus? You know, and, or why do you like Columbus? Or why did you locate here? And you can, you can vary that, you know what I mean, how you would want to do that. And then going on, I looked at communication questions and everything else. So if there's a, a different way you want to word that, we can, we can tweak it now.
How do you, so do you want us to take notes as they respond? Or do you want, like, I mean, like, how do you want to do this?
That was going to be my question, because originally, this was a survey that we were going to send out, or meet with the businesses and then have that information from each business. So if we're at a table with eight businesses, then are they each going to do their own? Or do we get consensus at the table? Or?
So the, the way that these, the talking point questions are for the table captains, and you're taking, you're going around the table. So let's say you have five businesses at your table, and you say to them, you know, do you think Columbus as an overall location is good for your business? And, and then you would go, you know, and you would say, you know, the, the question is, you know, one through five, one is very positive, and five is, 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 you know, negative. And then you would go around, and then it would, it would be up to the table captain to say, you know, you got three ones, one two, one four, you know what I mean. And that's, this is, this is your sheet, that you're taking, you're taking notes for, for the questions. And the idea is that at the end, you would be, I won't say tallying it, but at the end, you'll have feedback from all five of those businesses. And then we tally, tally all the table captains and bring it back to an EDA meeting, saying, you know, as an overall location, everybody, you know, the business that they really like Columbus as a location. You know, the level of communication they think is good, but here are the things that they, you know, the things that they would like to do. So last time, we, we summarized all the information, and then we brought it back to the EDA and said, okay, how do we want to, how do we want to address all these things? And you can dump all of these questions. We can do new questions. I was taking from our discussion, from the talking points that you were going to do individual visits with. And one of them there was, in the back, it was, you know, would you host, would you host a business, oh yeah, should the city continue to hold Columbus events? It was one that I put down here. Would you want an EDA member to visit your business leadership to answer questions and foster a better relationship? Like, some of these are yes and no answers, just to get you some feedback on whether or not they want, they, what, what they would like. But again,
But you'd like us to record responses so, in some form, so we can bring this back?
Yeah. And, and they would, whether you tally it on this sheet, or whether you tally it on the sheet, it doesn't, it doesn't really, it doesn't matter.
Do you want us to identify the business with the response? Or you just really want a, a tally of the responses and who said what is less important?
I think in this, last time that this happened, the business, the table captains actually filled in the people's name and business on these sheets. So we knew who was sitting at the table. We didn't know the exact responses. That's not how it was tallied. But we knew what businesses were, you know what I mean, were at the table. So it wasn't necessarily important what each business said. It was more important the, the tally.
And we're going to stay at that table. We're not moving around?
No, you'll, you'll be staying at that table.
I noticed there were two sheets. That's in case we make one a mess.
I only got one sheet.
I only got one.
They only gave you two sheets, Bill.
Low expectation.
I was going to ask for more sheets, just in case.
And, and I have extra sheets. And if you want to do this differently, we can, you know what I mean, this is, that's just why I wanted to have this review, you know what I mean, the night before. So we had a really good idea of, of how you wanted to do this. But I know everyone has a different style, you know what I mean, as a table captain. Because you're, you're really trying to lead your very small group so that, so that everybody talks to each other, they exchange cards, you have conversation during breakfast, and you're, you know what I mean, you're asking these questions in between, more so that everyone's talking and everybody is relating to everyone else. And that, and then they're not just sitting there eating breakfast and not looking at their neighbor.
Trying to figure out how we're going to eat.
I was just going to say that. Ron, now we got 40. It's okay. You can, you can nod. I'll ask the questions.
You do your homework first, and then we'll run up and eat.
Oh, okay.
So let's get our paperwork out of the way.
You eat, you eat during the guest presentations.
And, and if you think these are too many questions, I was asking Connor, you know, I don't know, is eight too many? Is, you know, it's 45 minutes.
It really depends on how the discussion goes. But I mean, I think having eight is good, just in case they're like, yes, no, yes, no. And we get to the end, it's like, oh, okay, we're out of questions. So, and if we don't get to the end, that's okay, too.
And I realize, I, when I was, I, I should not write these when I'm, when I'm tired. So the first question, you'll have to figure out, and maybe someone could say, my point here was asking whether Columbus is a good overall location for their business. In other words, do they, do they like where they're at? And, and to get some feedback from them. And then the last question, you know, what type of businesses do you think would be a perfect fit for Columbus that we don't have currently? Kind of just getting an idea, like, what are they thinking, like, would look, you know, what are they looking for compatible, that's compatible to them that maybe we don't have, from their perspective? I know we did, I know we did policy, and we, we, you know what I mean, looked at businesses that we thought would work well. But maybe we haven't thought of everything.
So question, will we have one of these per, per in, per person at our table to fill out?
Nope, this one, only the table captain has this.
Okay.
Or, or do you want, do you want everyone to, I can make copies. Do you want everyone to have the questions?
You know, it might be nice so they can look ahead and think about their answers for other questions. I mean, I just know when I'm, I like to have an agenda, so I know exactly what is coming next.
I think it might be nice, too, because it's a pretty short period of time that you've got, you know, a welcome by Running Aces, do this, go get your breakfast, go, you know, so you only got 15 minutes. So if we get a little bit off track, if you have it printed on, you can say, you know, maybe talk about one or two of these things, and then they can fill it out as the, you know, other speakers are, are talking or whatever. So you'd still have an opportunity to gather the information if we kind of get a little off track on the timeline.
I agree with that. Yeah, maybe you fill it out, and then let's kind of review it as a group after and have conversation.
I just think you have options then, if you, you know, people don't get to their table, and then they're talking, and, oh, Joe, I haven't seen you for a long time. It's like, okay, cut it off. We gotta, we gotta get through this. Then you gotta go get your lunch. Then you gotta exchange cards. And you've got 15 minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think question number six maybe should go in the beginning, because if they don't like the food, they may just.
Always thinking, Ron.
You always got to be ahead of the game.
There was, there was no order on these questions. I mean, there, there wasn't, there's, they're not progressive questions. They're just questions.
Yeah, and you can mix it up, right? I mean, you can, table captains have discretion to kind of focus on them, different questions.
So should I, should I change? So initially, like, this packet was just going, just going to table captains. So are you saying that you want this packet to go to everyone at the table?
Just the questions, I believe.
Just the questions.
Just, just the questions?
And the QR code.
And the QR code. And I don't know, it isn't bad to have the agenda for everybody. I mean, you don't have to have the little map. But if they had those three pieces for everybody, I don't think that's a bad idea.
I think people like to have the agenda in front of them.
Yep.
And they know how close they are to the end.
Yep. Or they don't hear that, you know, the person talking is Mayor Jesse Priner, and they can look down and go, that must be that Priner guy.
Yep.
So is it bad that it says table captain duties? And you want me to take that off?
You could take that off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they might even like the little sheet that they can put, you know, who they were sitting next to.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I was sitting next to Jim, and he's at, you know.
Got to call him about the roads.
Ziegler. What?
I'm going to have to call him about the roads, how great they are.
Yeah. What's your mobile number, Jim? We'll put that on there.
Connor, how many people have RSVP? Did we do RSVPs? Yeah. How many people did? How many businesses did?
Businesses, going off a conversation Elizabeth and I had had earlier, we're looking at about 13 businesses thus far. I forget our total number of people from those businesses, but I think we're anticipating at least a decent number of walk-ins.
Because I don't, I don't know that everybody read the fine print RSVP. Because when, when some of you all came back, they're like, oh, yeah, you're going. But then they didn't call. So I think they thought by telling you, yes, they were coming, means they didn't have to call Connor.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't have many. But half of them, the, the office admin said, oh, they're on spring break with their kids. So I'll, I'll get it to them when they get back.
Yeah, I had, I had that, too. Half of them were, were out of state.
And, and for the next four weeks, that's something I think we probably should look at. But because the first two weeks in April, the last two weeks in, you know what I mean, March, are, are basically, depending on what school district you are, you know, are on school, you know what I mean, spring break. So, and I've, yeah, I've got people calling back saying, oh, yeah, I would love to go, but I am, I'm out of town. So it is hard to kind of hone in on a date, which is why I wanted to ask them about Columbus. Because I don't think the, I don't think attendance is necessarily reflective of whether you like the event or not. Because I think, I, I mean, from the emails that I got, they're like, oh, so sorry, I wish I was there. You know what I mean, kind of thing, they're just not here to go. Okay. So what I'm, what I'm going to do is, right now, I have 12, I believe I have 12 tables of eight. Knowing that we were going to have a speaker table and an extra table, I thought, what we planned for was 80 people. And it was 10 tables of eight. Not that I thought that we were going to have that many. But again, that's what we, that's what we planned for. That's how many seats we're, we're going to have. So I'll make 75 copies. We'll be optimistic. And because of, because I only make 50, we'll have 70 people, and then I'll be running upstairs trying to copy things. But I'll take off the 2023 Columbus, I'll take off the table captain duties. And I'll take off for table captains on the talking points.
Sounds good.
Do, does anybody want me to take off any of these questions? Because you think another question would be, would be better? Or is there a question you think you want to put on instead of a question that's on here?
I think they're fine, Elizabeth. And also, your conversation can lead one way or the other. You know, somebody says something, jot it down, and...
I think in the past, the questions have been kind of fodder for getting a conversation going. But we've been willing to hear any number of comments that people wanted to share, and try and record those.
And also, I think this works to get people communicating right away. You know, it's seven o'clock in the morning, their hair is wet, they're still sleeping. Here you go. Let's start, let's get to business. And by the time they get through a couple of questions, you'll have new best friends.
We have two representatives here from a business. We could certainly hear if they think this is a good, a good format or not. Hopefully, you guys will be there.
It's a fun party and lots of good food.
Hey, we got 14.
Yeah. Good.
Anything else, Elizabeth?
Um, I just want to, I, I didn't call everyone, but I'm hoping everybody is coming tomorrow. And the only one that is not here is, is Karen, to kind of get the, the briefing. But we, we should be able to sit with her quick tomorrow. But it also depends on how many people, if, so, as to how many table captains you, you know what I mean, you need. But the idea is that each one of you would sit at a different table, you know, and, and host it. I don't have table numbers. We're not assigning tables. We tried to do that once, and it was a disaster. We tried to split everybody up, and we got, people were arguing with us. No, 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 I have to sit with my first and I came with. I'm like, why?
Okay, so if we have a table with only three people, three people at her table, three people at my table, should we move them all into one? Or leave them?
I think, I think you'll, you know what I mean, you'll leave them maybe even more apt to, you know, have more discussion. I think if you have one person at your table, or two, then maybe you would move. One or two is hard to have a, a good discussion.
Yeah. Okay. So, everybody, tomorrow's a big day.
Thanks for putting all that together.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Any other points other than this, Elizabeth?
I don't, I don't have anything further unless anybody has questions.
I'm good. Has anybody else been to one of these before?
No.
No? It's really...
I've been at, I've been at the happy hour one we did a few years ago, but not to the breakfast one.
No, not at the one we, not at Columbus in the morning.
Not in the morning.
It's really not, it seems a little intimidating, but it's not. Once you get there and it starts rolling, it just rolls. So, so anyway, all right, then we're quickly on to the letter E, announcements and reminders. Columbus tomorrow morning. It's 8:00 a.m. What time should we be there? 7:30?
7:30.
Yeah. And Planning Commission is on the 5th at 6:00. Workshop on the 11th at 5:30. Council meeting is on the 12th. We'll be halfway through the month. Yikes. The month of April.
Oh, my gosh.
So anyway, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Janet. I move to adjourn.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions?
Rob.
Rob aye.
Janet aye.
Sue aye.
Ron aye.
And Jesse aye. Our meeting is adjourned for tonight. Thank you.